Okay, I would like to call tonight's meeting to order.
Seven oh two P M.
Seven oh two P M. And if you can and able to, will you please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance to the flag with us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Spivey.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Hudson.
Present.
Mayor Ford.
Present.
Okay, next we have a minister. General Proceedings.
Thank you, Mayor. General Proceedings, approval of the meeting minutes for the administrative meeting September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the floor. We have any corrections? Here are no corrections. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have communications reports by the mayor. First, we have on the agenda, item number A is approval for the City of Country Club Hills two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, Comprehensive Plan.
May I be recognized?
Go right ahead.
Uh, we did discuss, Mayor, and I just wanted to thank the clerk for all the notes that she added that was important. But again, the comprehensive plan, um, we should look at the institutions, which are the schools, to improve in the future. Also, churches and the banks. I was trying to get information on the arable land, which means land that can produce food. Uh, the industrial parks, the commercial, residential, and from being an urban planner, um, I enjoy going through it. But there's a little more information that should be needed for us in the future. So again, I will try to work with the planners next time a little bit more. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion.
A motion.
Okay, you motion. That was your motion. Okay.
Motion now.
Yes.
To approve the comprehensive plan.
I got it. Thank you, sir. I need a second to go along with this motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It's been probably a motion and second out of any other questions from the council. Here are no other questions from the council. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next, item B, we have a presentation by Ms. Coleman for, I think she's a part of the Sisters Working It Out, I believe. Yes, uh, in recognition of the October, uh, as National Breast Cancer Month Awareness, we would like to ask her to come to the podium. With the presentation.
Good afternoon. Good evening. I'm sorry. Had a long day.
Good evening.
I am Lolita Coleman from Sisters Working It Out. We are a South suburban, a Southland breast cancer organization, and I am a resident of Country Club Hills. That's even better. Um, we provide in the Southland area. Right now, we are feeding two hundred and fifty-three breast cancer patients in the Southland, including Country Club Hills. We also provide transportation to their chemotherapies and any of their other appointments, all free of charge. So here in the Southland, Sisters Working It Out, we are truly working it out. And I would like to thank you on behalf of everyone that's a part of Sisters Working It Out for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask how many sisters are working it out in your organization?
It's four of us.
Okay. That's a lot of work.
Yes. The thing is, we partner with other organizations in the Southland to make all of this happen. We have a, um, active contract with Uber that transports all of our patients for no charge. As long as they're going for a chemo or radiation appointment, there's no charge to that patient. Um, it's to take a load off of everything else they have to do. So we don't have to be huge to do a huge thing, I believe that. But what we do is huge for those that need our services. And it's, we're boots on the ground. You know, I prefer to say we're more boots on the ground, hands on with our patients than just saying, okay, I'm gonna help you and drop the ball. We give you a full circle of a service, especially if you're a breast cancer and/or a cancer survivor. We still extend those services the same for men with prostate or any other cancers.
May I be recognized? Even saving one is something big. It doesn't matter. Do you follow me?
Yes.
So again, thank you for your services.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, uh, I would like a motion to accept Ms. Coleman's breast cancer awareness report.
I'd like to make a motion to accept Mrs. Coleman's breast cancer report.
It's been properly motioned, second. No questions. Um, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Go right here.
So what we've done is we've asked the elected officials, every year, we dress the part for breast cancer awareness. We wear our pink. So we wanted to do it this year with a purpose and make donations. So we are all making donations and some have their donations tonight and others will make pledges that we'll make sure the organization does receive. So if everyone could come down and, and for those who have the checks, they can pass the checks. And I have an envelope for everyone if you want to put your check in here.
Are we all going down?
Yes. And if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make a donation, we have extra envelopes if you would like to donate.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, one more thing. So everyone who's donating, I have a pen for you if you could stop by and see me after the meeting, or if you want to stop real quick right now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your gracious donations. Back to the agenda. Item number six, we have the city clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share that I had a great pleasure participating and receiving an award for beautification. It's always beautiful to see the hard work that we do for our beautiful flowers, and thank you for the commissioner as well, and just making our houses look beautiful. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's go to the committee reports. The first committee on the roster tonight would be the Finance Risk Management, uh, Report. Alderman Lockett, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval for accounts payable as of October ninth, twenty twenty-three for five hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly motioned and second. Are there any questions? Okay, here are no questions. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Next, um, is, um, approval, seeking approval for the City of Country Club Hills Retirement Agreement for, um, um, Richmond.
Second.
Okay. Been properly motioned, second. Any questions? Here are no questions. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Thank you.
End of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Law and Ordinance, Government Operations.
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman.
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to seek council approval for the ordinance, uh, number for MABUS.
Ordinance zero dash one zero dash two three.
Zero dash, zero dash three. What, can you read that?
Zero dash one zero dash two three.
Two three. I'd like to seek council approval for ordinance number zero dash zero dash three two three. This is an ordinance authorized an intergovernmental agreement for participation in a mutual aid box for alarm system, better known as MABUS. This system basically bring Country Club Hills, for example, Matson, Tinley Park, and all the first responders to work together. If a situation arrives in our town, there's not enough fire then to handle a big fire. So we can get help from Tinley Park and Matson and things like that. In turn, we will service them just the same way.
All right.
Second.
Probably motioned, second. Are there any questions concerning MABUS? Here are no questions. Roll call.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
End of report, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Public Works and Utilities, Alderman Davis, Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to seek council approval for intergovernmental agreement with Cook County Invest in Cook funding for two hundred thousand for the design and engineering costs for the BP Shared Youth Pass from Flossmore Road to one hundred seventy-fifth. And just want to remind the council, this was something that we approved back in twenty eighteen, so this is just the second phase. And the project, basically, it's going to connect two separate trail systems, um, uh, on BP pipelines with the right-of-way between one hundred seventy-fifth Community Park Trail System to Flossmore Road.
Second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Questions? Okay, here are no questions. Roll call, please.
If I can, just mention that the two hundred thousand dollars is a grant, right?
Right, that's correct, yeah.
It is a grant, yes.
City funds, correct.
Right.
It's a grant, okay. Roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, and the second item, Mayor, I'd like to seek council approval for I dot resolution for preliminary engineering phase one and phase two engineering agreement for the installation of school signage. And this was also something that was approved, uh, back in twenty eighteen. And the original project was to extend the sidewalks from, uh, Southwood, west of, uh, west to Cicero Avenue.
Yes.
Uh, and also with the, uh, flashing signage, that'll include all the schools, Southwood, Meadowview, Secuda, and Nob Hill.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any other questions? Here are no questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
And another item, I just want to give an update, the deco, all the resurfacing, the curb and the street resurfacing, that's been completed. So the next step would just be the striping, so.
Great, great.
And that's when they're gonna utilize the, uh, crossing signals for those, yes.
Okay. Yep, that'll be done completely real soon. Anything else, Alderman?
No, that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you. Uh, next, we have Economic Development Plan and Zoning. Alderman Spivey, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, at this time, our way have is, um, that everybody knows that Walmart parking lot is being resurfaced. So I just spoke with Joe earlier today, and I think they should be done within the next three weeks on that. And also, Mr. Whittenhour, he has, um, some plans being brought up for the space that's next door to the, um, um, big lots. But at this time, there's a gag order on things, so he can't discuss that. So I'll be talking with you about that soon. End of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have Education Parks and Recs.
Yes, Mayor. I just talked to one of my residents, Kathy, and her neighbor passed, so I'd like one minute of silence for, um, gentleman who passed, which was her neighbor. Thank you. Um, I talked to the principal at Nob Hill Chief and Fire Chief, and he's asking me to give you his number so that, uh, you can set up drills for him. He wants to set up a drill for the students, so I'll give it to you at the end of the meeting. Also, I'm scheduling a meeting with the new principal of Chateau, just to see. Uh, the chief has done an excellent job of keeping the sidewalks clear, so the kids won't have to walk in the streets. We actually, I go by there once a week just to make sure there's no cars blocking the sidewalks. Um, my next meeting will be a unofficial meeting, uh, five thirty to twenty-fourth here at City Hall to discuss how the city can help District One, twenty-eight, two twenty-eight, uh, one forty, one sixty, and two twenty-seven. End of my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, I need a motion. Open the floor.
I make a motion, open the floor to the public.
Okay, been probably motioned, second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
All right, public, if you would like to address the council, please come to the podium. Limit your time to three minutes or less.
Hello, I'm, my name is Lynn Barnes. I live in Ward Five, and I have a question regarding the reassessment of our property. Our assessment went up a hundred thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand dollars. And based on how taxes were calculated in last tax year, our property taxes are going to go up by five, over five thousand dollars. So are we going to adjust the rate accordingly? What is the plan? Because they're taxing people out of their homes.
We can't adjust the rate as the city. There is a, a seminar that's coming up.
Seminar tomorrow.
Uh, who has that information that you probably want to attend? They have the assessor, uh, I'm sorry, not the assessor. Yeah, it's assessor, right. Uh, it's gonna be at Tinley Park. You're more than welcome to go to that meeting and ask that question because we can't answer that here. Uh, the city did not increase the rate. So, uh, Cook County will be there, the elected officials will be there, and it's gonna be at Tinley Park, and do we have that information?
October tenth, Sixth Convention Center.
Okay.
Did you get that?
And we do have flyers on the table in the lobby.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, please take one, and that's where your question needs to be directed, um, to the, to those staff, to the staff of Cook County.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Carl Washington.
Mr. Washington, good evening.
Resident along with my wife, Sharon. Couple of quick questions. Uh, great information regarding, this is added to what I was gonna ask before about the tax situation, but also to the seminars and the different events. We're noticing, I guess, the, the website is strictly for governmental activities, governmental things, but the Facebook page, I guess we found out now, is where details such as these meetings that affect us from a tax standpoint, or any improvements, or committee meetings, seem to go on the Facebook page. So I guess what we want to know is, the output of information regarding some of these things that the council talks about, where exactly can we find? Because it seems to be a little bit all over the place. So I just want to know, I know Mr. Booker does a great job with it, but should we be checking more on these types of details of what's going on in local government, of what's surrounding us through the Facebook or through the, uh, website? Second thing, um, when it comes to the parks and rec, we did notice, uh, we take our morning walks typically a couple times a week over in the park, and we noticed that there's been great work as far as done with the lawns and keeping everything else up, but we noticed that some of the structures need a little extra work. And I, uh, we just want to make sure that you're working towards making sure that those structures are being painted and taken care of, and if they're on a list, and when that may happen. Uh, so if we could get information regarding that, that was my only other question to have right now. And thank you very much for resurfacing the street there on one hundred seventy-eight. That's beautiful. Uh, we're looking forward to any of those other improvements. One more thing, do we still have money available to cut lawns for houses that are abandoned in or around our block areas? Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Vaughn Harrison.
Good evening.
Fifth Ward. President for sixteen-plus years. Um, I don't have long, so I wanted to just kind of read something that I prepared in response to the comprehensive plan that was approved this evening. Um, I did submit a copy of my response, comments to this body, um, earlier today. What I have right now was just pretty much a summary of what I provided earlier. I want to start by first saying that it's my sincere, ongoing desire, sincere, to support Country Club Hills and transform Country Club Hills into a sustainable and safe community that can be used as a motto for predominantly black communities worldwide. With that being said, I want to start off with an excerpt, Article twenty-five of the Journal of Imperative Urban Law and Policy, written by David Rousen, titled "The Future Comprehensive Plan." Prototypical twenty-first century comprehensive plan addresses community values and issues identified through community engagement. Is organized around cross-cutting themes rather than topical elements and explores dimensions that transcend land use and physical development. I am sincerely appreciative of the efforts of the CMAP team as they were able to deliver a strategic framework that I began asking Mayor Ford about, uh, retroactive to December eighth, two thousand sixteen, when I offered my volunteer services in the development of a ridden Country Club Hills strategy. Note, however, that, uh, my appreciation and respect for the CMAP team should not be confused with satisfaction of the finished product. Uh, since CMAP supports a large region of seven counties and two hundred eighty-four communities, it's understood that their assignment was time-bound and as a result, influence outcomes. Further, it's not my expectation that they can learn about the nuances of a rapidly changing and dynamically predominantly black community within a short period of time. Um, while I have provided a more detailed but not an exhaustive written plan to the elected officials, I would like to ensure that a synopsis of my identified opportunities get recorded in the public record. Uh, these opportunities are exceedingly critical in the hyperpolarized society that is on the cusp of sentient artificial intelligence and a wealth gap that is widening between blacks and whites in America. First opportunity, when appropriate, as aligned with the needs of the community, a sustainable and competitive socioeconomic strategy. The twenty-first century requires a deep understanding of the educational strategy. Number two, statistical significance and sample size. Standard one point two and one point three in the standards for statistical surveys, which comes from the Office of Management and Budget, states the following. Agencies must design the survey to achieve the highest practical rates of response commensurate with the importance of the survey uses to ensure that survey results are representative of the target population so they can be used to inform decisions. Uh, the sample size that was used for our plan was not statistically significant. It did not give us the margin of error that's typically needed, uh, to derive a comprehensive plan. Number three, comprehensive plans should conform at a minimum to the American Planning Association Comprehensive Plan Standard, that's the APA. Uh, during one of the development meetings back in July, twenty twenty-three, I asked a controlling member of the Country Club Hills Comprehensive Plan Team what the measures of success were. I was unable to receive a definitive response. The APA has a scoring matrix with a level of confidence or level of achievement scoring system, which should be used in that, in evaluating performance of the plans being developed.
Sir.
Number three, because I've, I've gone way over time.
Yes, sir.
General comments, uh, the Country Club Hills Comprehensive Plan should have prioritized a focus on the plan to reduce crime. This is critical as per capita, crime rates increase and the type of crimes in Country Club Hills becomes more violent. Uh, data from the survey number one stated this, there is a rising concern of crime among respondents. My last statement, recommendation number six on page eighty-six of the plan suggests this. Ensure that there is a translator at every city meeting and that all staff made advertisements.
Sir, sir.
The comprehensive plan should not have said that we only have three point five percent
Sir.
of the population Hispanic, so we have to make some accommodations.
Were you not on that committee?
Thank you very much.
Were you not on that committee?
They never invited me to the meetings. I wish they did, sir.
All right, sir. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Motion close floor to the public, second.
All right, it's been properly motioned, second. Uh, roll call, please.
Certainly. Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next, we have, um, mo, uh, I'm sorry, motion two. Closed the floor, we just did that. Automatic reports. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Automatic reports, uh, starting with, uh, on this end.
Ward three.
Alderman Hudson.
Thank you, Mayor. To the residents of Ward Three, the sinkhole located at one seventy-nine, one hundred seventy-ninth Street in Fond Ridge should begin construction mid-October of twenty twenty-three. Mayor, this is a concern of the homes in that area, because I guess doing constructions, whatever, the, the, uh, the ground or whatever wasn't repaired and is hollow since then, I think a couple of months ago, the, uh, construction workers been out there, the, uh, engineers, and
Yep.
they gave a date around, uh, mid-October there, start beginning the, uh, the repair work.
That is correct. Um, that, that sinkhole extends through maybe about three residence
Correct.
homes over there, and we in the process of getting that, uh, taken care of.
And also, uh, Mayor, I have repaired and turned over my streets and sidewalk repair spreadsheet to the department heads with, uh, future streets and sidewalks to be added as well. Also, uh, myself, Mayor Ford, uh, P W, and the other personnel met with Also, myself, Mayor Ford, PW, and the other personnel met with residents on the forty-six hundred block of Hundred Seventy-Fifth Place regarding issues and concerns of IDOT trees and water issue. This concern has been delivered to IDOT, and we are waiting service for that as well. That would be the current update for Ward Three at this time, Mayor, end of my report.
Thank you so much, Alderman Davis.
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Ms. Barnes, Fifth Ward, I also wanted to share with you, the appeal date is the twenty-third for Rich Township. So that's another avenue that could be pursued. And the majority of the residents that I've talked to, we've all had an increase similar to yours. So something has to be done. And the thing the city can't control is, you know, the amount of taxes that we levy. That's what maybe you were kind of questioning, so. And I don't anticipate that changing, which, ineffective the values of more, it should offset each other. You know, that's my hope, but I'm sure you can get more information tomorrow. And do want to thank Mayor, the city for Jerry, and the mayor for really staying on simmer, landscape, getting the mound removed. And then the other item, Mr. Harrison, you know, I applaud you. You know, you always have stressed an issue to me to stay involved in the city, and I don't want to see you discouraged. I mean, you have that right as a resident, so I encourage you to keep pursuing that. And I do want to mention that Cornerstone Christian Fellowship, they're having their Food Fresh giveaway on October thirtieth, and that's located at forty-one oh one West Flossmoor Road. And that's the end of my report, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lockett.
Thank you Mayor, I'd just like to say to Ms. Coleman, just keep doing what you're doing, I think it's great. Sisters working it out, helping people in need and at their lowest point in life, and boosting them up. Also, I'd like to thank all the residents that came out, sincerity for the beautification awards. We had some, probably three hundred people that came out and received awards for keeping their homes nice and neat. And I'd just love to see it the next year, that there'd be over a thousand people, because we all have beautiful homes here, and be nice just to add a little more to enhance your property. And if we can, I'd like to take just a moment of silence for former employer of ours, CSO, he used to be the School Resource Officer, and he worked here for many years, Mr. David Ball. He's truly going to be missed, the children loved him over there, and he did a lot for the city. So if we can, just a moment of silence for CSO David Ball. Thank you. And I want to remind everyone that the weather is changing. Children are walking in the streets, be careful when you're driving. Some of the childrens don't participate with the sidewalks, so be careful when you're driving. Yield to the children, and that it's almost time to cut on your furnaces, so.
It's too late.
Buckle up, thank you, end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Spivey.
Oh, my turn. Thank you Mayor, I just want to thank Roger for helping out and getting things really together in the Fourth Ward, for the streets being repaired and sidewalks. The residents are really excited about that, they're really happy the way things are getting done. So I just want to thank you guys and Public Works for making that happen. Also, I want to thank the commission this weekend for the beautification award, it was very well attended. Everybody was there, it was a great time, thank you guys for coming out, and thanks for the commission for putting that together. Also, Mrs. Coleman, for the breast cancer, thank you very much for all you do. I've attended your programs over here under the shed, very well attended, and the things that you guys do for the patients, I really appreciate that. Also, Mr. Ball, he lived in the Fourth Ward Provincetown, and he was always working with the theater, doing security, doing contest season, so he's going to be missed, end of my report, sir. Oh, one more thing, also, on the fourteenth, my mentoring program that I belong to with the One Hundred Black Men, we're having our Twenty-First Annual Event down at the UIC Forum, and it starts from nine to two. So if you know any kids that's in need of scholarships, please just go to the One Hundred BMC website, get registered, and we're going to have surrounding schools there, two-two-seven. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Edwards.
Thank you Mayor, far as the grass being cut, I believe it should be cut every two weeks, but sometimes it rains quite a bit and it kind of goes off. I know my residents text me, and then I send it to the building department. So we have a pretty big ward from Hundred and Sixty-Seven to Hundred and Seventy-Eighth, and we had quite a bit of houses that are, you know, not, no residents in. So just keep sending it to me, and I'll keep trying to get it done, okay? Far as my friend over here, the taxes, it would have been nice on the eighteenth and nineteenth that we had someone, you know, at the meeting that we have in, that could maybe help us a little bit more understand, or give you a factor of being able to calculate, maybe to get an idea, because some people got to prepare for that, I mean, it's going to go into their savings and survive. For the gentleman who always gives a brilliant report and excellent research, palate you, keep trying, keep working. For the field house and the structures, I've brought it up last year. I went up there, I was applauded, windows broke, painting, just, you know, it's a beautiful structure, it need to be taken care of, end of my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we recognize you real quick?
Go ready, yes sir.
Ah, yes, just let you know, the manager at, owner at Dox at Hundred and Sixty-Seven Street contacted me. He is in need of cooks, cashiers, and shift managers as soon as possible. So if anybody out there knows someone is looking for a job, go up to Dox at Hundred and Sixty-Seven and see Keith Pryor, he is desperate looking for staff work starting immediately. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. With that said, we are also looking for building inspectors, so if you know anybody that wants to work for the city, let us know that as well. Couple of things, Mr. Washington, you asked a question about information, and I was told that, you know, Facebook and then Channel Four would be the options. And then we try to put as much as we can out in the water bill. So those are the kind of things that we try to do to get information out. This one came up pretty quickly, we passed out, Saturday, the beautification award. It was amazing to see three hundred people there, three hundred residents in the City of Country Club Hills who valued their property and was able to receive awards, it was great. But we were able to pass out a flyer on this tax review thing to each one of those. So we kind of got it out that way, but we'll make sure that it's copies out there on the front table.
Yes Mayor.
Get a copy out there, when people come pay their water bills, they can pick up a copy. So we're just trying to communicate it the best we can. But that's, that's great now. It sounds like someone has gotten their property tax bill? We just got an reassessment letter, right?
That's it.
Okay.
That's it, that's it.
So we're determined from that our taxes is going to go up?
No.
Oh, I guess that's what we.
Cess value.
The cess value went up.
Yeah.
That's why property is worth more. Okay, okay, I got it.
Yeah, it's not.
Comps, Papa just been sold near you, they kind of like looked at that this year.
Yeah, okay, well, the, your tax bill should come out, I guess, November first.
Fifteen?
That's the date, I think.
I thought it was the fifteenth of November, October, I don't know, let me check.
No, I, no.
It's November?
I was told the first of November, so I don't know, I just hope it come out soon so we can get past it, you know. But anyway, that's all I have.
You might want to mention the closing date for FEMA.
I'm sorry?
Name for FEMA?
Oh yeah, 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 I think that's October twenty-third. Did I say the seventeenth? Okay, thank you, thank you for keeping me honest here. FEMA, yeah, if you, if your residents received water through the month of July when they had the heavy rain and everything, Cook County is partnering with FEMA to reimburse residents for some of the damages that they incurred during that water. And so if you have water in your basement, you need to come up and see us, and we can send you in the right direction to file a claim. Is that it, anything else?
Just one more thing, Mayor, I'd like to remind everyone that we're having a community meeting wards one, two, and three, that's October eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
And the nineteenth is.
That's four and five.
And that starts at six P M, so invite all the residents to come out and share some of your ideals, and all the department heads to be here, so if you have any questions or concerns, be a great time to come out.
This is a good time.
What location?
I'll be right here.
City Hall.
City Hall, right here, City Hall. A great opportunity for residents to get informed as to what's going on in the city. We'll have all of our department heads, Public Works, the Building Department, Finance Department, Police Department, the Fire Department, you name it, the mayor will be there, the elected officials will be there. So let everybody know, come on out and be a part of that. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to close, make a motion to close, make a motion.
To adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second.
It's been probably motion second, roll call please.
Alderman Lockett.
Yes.
Alderman Davis.
Yes.
Alderman Spivey.
Yes.
Alderman Edwards.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson. Seven forty-three P M.
Thank you all, and be safe out there and have a great evening.